Good afternoon. I'm Jim Burris, investigative reporter with 90.1 WABE. Welcome to the Atlanta Press Club Louder Milk Young Debate Series coming to you from the studios of Public Broadcasting Atlanta. This is the debate between the candidates for Atlanta City Council President, and let's meet those three candidates. They are, in alphabetical order, C.T. Martin. He served Southwest Atlanta's District 10 on the City Council since 1990. As Councilman Martin failed to show for today's debate, he will be represented by an empty chair. Felicia Moore has represented Northwest Atlanta's District 9 on the Council since 1997. And Alex Wan is in his second term as a council member, which includes parts of Northwest Atlanta. Now, let's meet our panelists. Giovanna Derpic is a political reporter and anchor with CBS 46. Maggie Lee is a freelance journalist who has worked for the Macon Telegraph, Creative Loafing, and The Supporter Report. And Stephanie Stokes covers City of Atlanta government for 90.1 WABE. Today's debate consists of three rounds. For more information on those rounds, just visit the Atlanta Press Club's website, that's atlantapressclub.org. But before we get started with those three rounds, I'm going to pose a question that each candidate has 30 seconds to answer. That question is, as City Council President, you'll likely have to deal with continued fallout related to the City Hall bribery scandal. On your watch, how do you ensure something like that does not happen again? Felicia Moore.
Well, first of all, we thank you for this opportunity. And on my watch, we will be looking at how we can get our government more transparent, because I believe the more eyes we have on city government, the better. We will also look at the council members and their assignments on committee to make sure that we have, particularly our finance executive chair, one that is committed to finding out how we can strengthen our rules and our laws about corruption that can stop it from happening in the future. So we will be laser-focused on regaining the public trust.
Alex Wan, you have 30 seconds to answer the same question.
First of all, I want to thank the Atlanta Press Club for hosting this. What I've planned to do is to bring the experience I have as a small business owner. I was previously with a small engineering consulting firm. We were a contractor for the federal government Department of Defense. So I understand the games and the tricks that other contractors and government agencies will play to block folks out. I think we need strong procurement reform, and I look forward to leading that effort with City Council.
C.T. Martin, it's your turn to answer the same question, but since Councilman Martin is unable to join us, he is represented by an empty chair. We will now move to the first formal round. In this round, our panel of local journalists will ask each candidate two questions. Candidates then have 60 seconds to respond. And Giovanna Derpic, you get the first question to Alex Wan.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Wan.
Thank you.
You want to lead City Council as president, but some people may argue that you haven't spearheaded any major legislative accomplishments while on the City Council. What would you tell these folks who say that this isn't appropriate and that you need to show what is on your resume that would count as a major legislative accomplishment?
So I see City Council President not just as a legislative person or a position, but also a team builder. The City Council President really is the team leader for City Council. It's going to be even more important next year when we have at least seven new council members and a new mayor. So while I think it is important to have legislative experience, which I do have in working in the eight years that I've been on City Council, chairing four committees of five of the seven, eight years I've been on there, I do think, again, I think we're missing the fact that we have to get those seven members up to speed quickly. We have to get us working deliberately, deliberatively. We have to make sure that we have the forum in which we are inviting members of the public in to have these conversations with us, give us great ideas, help us brainstorm and craft the solutions going forward. So again, I may have been on Council only two terms, but I think I have the right temperament, experience that the Council will need as its team leader.
But what is your major accomplishment?
I think my major accomplishment has been the financial turnaround of the city. I've been part of the, I was elected in 2009 to join City Council to help fix the financial condition that the city was in. I chaired Finance Committee three of the seven, three of the eight years that I was on Council. I served on the Budget Commission. I served on the Mayor's Waste and Efficiency Commission. That's been my, I think, my major accomplishment has been the financial situation that the city finds itself in now.
Stephanie Stokes, it's now your turn to ask Felicia Moore a question.
Councilmember Moore, you've been called a thorn in the side of Mayor Kasim Reed. But of course, the City Council President is expected to work with the mayor. So if you are elected, how will you handle that relationship?
Well, I will handle that relationship, as I have worked collaboratively with other colleagues to pass legislation on Council. And that is, first of all, respecting the role of the executive branch, as well as the executive branch reciprocating and respecting the oversight and the fiduciary responsibility of the City Council. I certainly would hope that the mayor's issues would align with those that I'm concerned about and constituents are concerned about, our crime in our city, our infrastructure, and particularly affordable housing, which are major issues. And so I believe that whoever is becoming mayor, as I've listened to the candidates, that those are things that are on their plate as well. And so I have no problem thinking that I can work with the mayor.
We now go back to Giovanna, who will ask a question to Felicia Moore.
Ms. Moore, city politics as of late has become quite vicious, particularly possibly because we have so many people running for the position of mayor. We also expect to have quite a few new faces with these seats. You're known for having a fiercely independent streak. You swim against the tide. How can having an independent streak build consensus in this kind of environment?
Well, that is an interesting question. I think that you have to look at my record. And my record is one of independents and doing the job that a City Council member is to do. Those are the things I mentioned, oversight, et cetera. But also, I've made major accomplishments on City Council. I have authored legislation that has gotten, which is much touted, our $175 million in reserve. It was my authorization of that legislation to make sure that we had our city in a good financial position. Or the legislation I passed on Matty's Call that helps our seniors and make them safe and found if they wander from their homes. So I have done many legislative initiatives at Council, and you have to work collaboratively and you have to get support of other council members, and the mayor for that matter, in order to get those things done.
But you're known for going against the grain. How much of-
That is correct. If it isn't, if, I will say that I vote yes for the voters. You may talk about it being a no, but it's a yes for the voters when a council member vets issues, know what they're talking about, and provide the correct oversight. And that's what I've done. And when I don't have that issue, I want to be accountable to the people who elect me to be able to explain to them why I voted the way that I did.
All right, Maggie, we come to you. It's your turn to ask Alex Wan a question.
Sure. Let me, let me ask you a question, you know, as a financial, financial person on Council, a financial question. Cities all over the country are trying to get, lure Amazon headquarters to their cities. Local governments throughout the country regularly offer companies, you know, incentives of millions of dollars worth, even hundreds of millions of dollars, to lure companies. What should Atlanta's pitch to Amazon be?
I think Atlanta, this is a fantastic opportunity for not just the City of Atlanta, but the state of Georgia. And I hope that, in collaboration with the state, that we'll make a strong pitch to bring Amazon here. What's in it for the city? I think that we, every time that we've given incentives, particularly to companies like NCR, who landed close to my district, I've been looking at, number one, what is the return on our investment? How many jobs are we bringing into the city? What are the increase both property taxes and/or sales tax and/or payroll taxes that will come to us? What is the return on investment? When will we get that payback? I think we also need to, you know, it will have a regional effect as well. It will help our airport. I think, again, it's just looking at the economic return that happens with it and making sure that the companies that deliver what they say they're going to deliver, both in terms of jobs and tax revenues.
Is there any offer or incentive that's too high?
I think really the answer to that question is what the city can afford and based, what cash we have available or what incentives we have. I think so far, the incentives that we provided to companies have all been reasonable, based on the investment that they project to make in the city for their particular project. So I think it's got to be on a case-by-case basis.
All right. Thank you all for that. And that concludes our first round in this debate between candidates for Atlanta City Council President. This Atlanta Press Club debate comes to you today from the studios of Public Broadcasting Atlanta. Now we move to the second round. Candidates, you may now ask each of your opponents one question. You'll have 30 seconds to ask that question. Your opponent will have 60 seconds to respond. Finally, you'll have 30 seconds for rebuttal, if you so choose. And by random selection, Felicia Moore, you will ask the question first to Alex Wan.
Hello, Mr. Wan. As we have gone along on all of our different forms, transparency has been an issue that we have discussed. Could you answer three things that you have done besides posting your expenditures online to help advance checkbook-level spending online for our city government citywide?
So first, when you proposed your legislation, one of the first things I asked was what the cost of implementation would be, as well as the technological requirements, because I think that would have been a very important piece of information to present as the author of the paper, to garner support from the rest of our colleagues. Quite frankly, this should be a no-brainer thing, but for some reason, we haven't been able to do it. And I think it's because the information isn't, isn't complete. But ultimately, it's still being held in committee.
Felicia Moore, you have 30 seconds for a rebuttal.
Well, I was asking for three things that you specifically did, and you talk also so much about collaboration and being able to work with colleagues. If transparency is an important issue, I was asking what you specifically have done to help me or others who think the same way, to advance the issues that you just brought up.
All right. Felicia Moore, you may now ask a question to C.T. Martin. As we mentioned, C.T. Martin has not shown for today's debate, therefore, he is represented by an empty chair.
So my question was to Mr. Martin, why he has not published his expenditures online. And if so, does he support transparency, online checkbook-level spending for citywide, across city government?
Since he is not here and cannot offer a response to that, we do offer you still the opportunity to rebut what you think his answer might have been.
Well, I think his answer may have been that he has issues with the transparency. And I would say the more eyes on city government, the better for our citizens, the better for our government. And I would hope that he would do what other countries, cities around the country are doing, and that is post those expenditures online. It's the citizens' money, and they should be able to see it.
Alex Wan, it is now your turn to ask a question to Felicia Moore.
So Ms. Moore, you've been basing your campaign on ethics, accountability, and transparency, yet you continue to present false and misleading information to the voters, including public statements that you never voted to raise property taxes, which you did in 2009, that you published all of your Council transactions, when in fact, it's only back to 2013. And last night, you even said it was back to 2003. And then the poll you conducted on September 18 through 21st contains outrageous misrepresentations about me and Mr. Martin. You're obviously comfortable misleading the public. Is this the ethics, accountability, and transparency that you think Atlanta deserves more of?
Well, no, Atlanta deserves more of what I've been giving and been consistent in, Mr. Wan. And the points that you raise, I totally disagree with. We had a poll done by a nationally-known pollster, and all of the polls suggest, not only suggest, but say, even those that are independent from the one that I did, that I'm leading in this race with Mr. Martin. I'm leading him by nine points, and I'm leading you in this race by 18 points. And I believe that is because people know that I have been a reformer. They know I've worked to make sure we get transparency in city government. They know that I've worked for fiscal responsibility in city government, having authored legislation that has gotten our reserves to a point where you can enjoy being able to say that the city is on the right track.
Alex Wan, you have 30 seconds for a rebuttal.
So Ms. Martin, I think, Ms. Moore, you missed the point. In your poll, you say very outrageous and misleading facts about me and Mr. Martin. I'm not talking about the results. And if you stand by that, I challenge you to release, have your pollster release them on letterhead, the full transcript of that poll, so that all the voters can see what you're willing to do to get into office.
Well, again, Mr. Wan, the poll was one of the, what do you like? Would you be more likely? And actually, there were questions that were very negative towards myself, and you understand, I'm sure, that there's messaging. So if people would like to see the poll, we'd be more than happy to provide it for them.
All right. We're going to move on now. And Alex Wan, you may ask your question to C.T. Martin, who again, is represented by an empty chair.
All right. So Mr. Martin, in 2012, I introduced legislation to the Atlanta City Council that expressed our support for marriage equality. At the time, you were one of only two council members that voted against that. This was all predating the Supreme Court decision that did affirm marriage for same-sex couples. If I were to introduce the resolution again on Monday, how would you vote this time?
Since he cannot answer, you are allowed to rebut what you think his answer might be.
Well, either way, I don't, I'm not sure if he would have answered yes or no, but I will say that the work that I've been trying to do on City Council is to change hearts and minds towards the LGBTQ community. He did vote last year in support of the religious, against the Religious Freedom Act, and I hope that we continue to make that progress with, with him.
All right. Well, that concludes round two of this, the Atlanta Press Club debate between the three candidates running for Atlanta City Council President. We're coming to you from the studios of Public Broadcasting Atlanta, and we now move to our third and final round. In this round, our panel of journalists will address a question to the candidate of her choice, and will continue until we run out of time. I'll determine if a rebuttal is appropriate. In such case, candidates will have 30 seconds for that response. Giovanna Derpic of CBS 46, your first question in this round.
Ms. Moore, Atlanta has become a prime example of overdevelopment without proper planning, without smart growth. At least one other city has studied Atlanta as a model of what not to do. You've been on the City Council for 20 years, longer than either, than your other opponent. It was on your watch that this overdevelopment happened that wasn't planned. Why should voters trust you to lead the charge and get it right in the future?
Well, they can trust me because I have certainly been vocal about that. I certainly have, over the years, watched our planning function go from inside City Hall, being the Planning Commissioner, really being at the head of that, to now more moving it over to our development arm, which is Invest Atlanta. And they have a very critical role, but they're the arm and not the brain. And I think that we need to move that policy back in city government. And as I've talked to citizens, and knowing that we're going to have more people coming here, I think this Planning Commissioner is getting it right, where he's looking at what's going to happen in the next 20 years here in the City of Atlanta. But I also want to layer on that, that we've got to make sure that we focus on infrastructure and how the growth matches the infrastructure, so we don't run into issues there.
Maggie Lee, freelance reporter, it's your turn to ask a question.
Sure. I have a question for, for Mr. Wan. As you know, of course, we have an ongoing, what's apparently an ongoing bribery investigation at City Hall. There's been some guilty pleas in connection with allegations of bribery by people who are, who are trying to win city contracts. City Council is in charge of setting policies here. How did this happen, and what policies need to change?
So I, one of the things I will tackle first off when I'm City Council President is complete procurement reform. As I mentioned in my opening statement, as a former government, federal government contractor, I understand the tactics that both the user agency and contractors will use to kind of secure contracts without and eliminate competition. So I think there are processes that City Council can continue to strengthen in terms of daylighting the request-for-proposal process, daylighting the appeals process, limiting the ability of user agencies to add additional dollars to a contract without recompeting it, as well as limiting when an RFP can be canceled simply because you don't, you know, the contractor of choice didn't win that. I think these are the things that this has brought to light, and Council needs to act. And I look forward to using the experience I had as a small business owner and a contractor to implement those changes.
But how, you know, how is it that this, that this happened? How, I mean, some of the, some of the guilty pleas go back to incidents that happened as far back as 2010.
So when the contracts come to the City Council, we basically have an up or down vote. And like I said, a lot of these processes happen even before the decision is made by the user agency and it comes to the city. So that's where we need to focus. And until you have an incident like this where it unveils and lights up the problems, sometimes it's hard to know what gaps you have to close.
Stephanie Stokes of 90.1 WABE, you may ask your question.
Councilmember Moore, experts say we are facing an affordability crisis. But I've talked to developers, and they say we can't build affordable housing without financial help from the city. So what would your, what would be your solution to this difficult problem?
Well, it's a difficult problem, and I think that it has many areas that we can look at. One, we have a proposal that has come before us in City Council to look at city-owned property. When you own the property, you have the ability to say what you're going to do with it. The second is, we have a myriad of pieces of property in the Land Bank Authority, and that tool has not been used adequately, where we can look at the Land Bank Authority property and create affordable units in some of these vacant homes and vacant lots that we have throughout the city. And then finally, we need to understand that we need a variety of affordability, from the lower end of the spectrum up to workforce housing, so that our police and firefighters can stay in the city, so that people who do, in the service industries can be here, because they need to be available for our workforce. They also need to be accessible to transit. And frankly, all of the transit's within the City of Atlanta limits, and so we need to make sure that they can get to and from work. And so that's some of the things that I think that we need to look at affordability, is how we can leverage what we have and make it affordable because we own it.
Would you support more city funding to create affordable units?
Yes, I support not only the trust fund for the Belt Line, and we need to make sure that we get as many units as we can out there. We have grant programs that we are reaching out to the federal government and others for. We've passed bonds to help with the homeless. So anything that we can do to find money, even if it's general fund finance, we should be able to try to help this affordability crisis, and it is real.
As moderator, I would like to take the opportunity to ask a question of each of you, and that is, you are looking most likely, potentially, at the next City Council President, whether it's you yourself or your opponent. How will you work with whomever voters choose? And Councilwoman Moore, we'll, we'll start with you.
You're talking about in terms of the council members?
How would you work with, say, Alex Wan, if he is elected council president?
Well, Alex Wan and I have served, as he has served, for the last eight years, and we have had a cordial relationship as colleagues on Council. And certainly, I would love to work with him on issues that address the LBGTQI community or any other issues that he may have in the community that he serves, no more than I would want to, want to work with everyone. That's one of the things that has been a hallmark of my service, is that not only have I served my district and served them well for nearly 20 years, but I've also worked with the business community, the religious community, and other communities and neighborhoods across the city. And that's why I believe that people are really excited about this campaign and knowing that, and that's why the polls are resulting, that we are certainly a favorite campaign in this race.
Alex Wan, how would you work with Councilwoman Moore or Councilmember C.T. Martin?
Mr. Burris, I appreciate the question. I started off as a community volunteer, working with community organizations, my neighborhood association. And I expect that spirit to continue if I'm in the City Council President position or if I'm back in the community again. And that's, now that I've been on City Council and really understand the inner workings of both the city and the departments, I fully expect that I will continue to leverage that experience and plus my education and background to come back and work with council members on issues that I care about. And understand, you know, now that I know the language, the mechanics, I think I'll be a lot more effective if I'm not so fortunate to win this race.
Giovanna Derpic of CBS 46, we return to you for a question.
Mr. Wan, about 17 years ago, I would visit Atlanta practically every couple of weeks, and homelessness was not a serious problem then. When I moved here nearly a year ago, that was the first thing that immediately jumped out at me. What is your specific plan, one, two, three, to give the homeless population not only dignity, but real hope for a future, while at the same time assuring residents in some areas that they're not going to be constantly harassed, that they're not going to be living in areas surrounded by many homeless camps?
So the homeless issue is something that I care very passionately about. In fact, so passionately that I'd have dedicated three years of my professional life to working with Jerusalem House, an HIV housing provider. And through that, I- And through that, I learned, one of the first things you have to do in any homeless program is to provide supportive services around the shelter. It's not enough to house the person. You've got to address the fundamental issues that cause the homelessness in the first place. So securing adequate funding for supportive services. The second one is to really engage the nonprofit community. There are some great nonprofits that are doing great work in the community. The city does not need to replicate that. We just need to find the partners and make arrangements with them, other counties, other municipalities, to address this. And the third is just more funding. I mean, you know, we passed, and I supported, the Homeless Opportunity Bond. We need to continue finding sources of money, and maybe philanthropic dollars. But, but that's ultimately how we're going to solve that problem.
Maggie Lee, your next question.
Sure, here's, here's a question for Ms. Moore. Let's, let's talk about this idea of sanctuary cities, that is, cities that enact policies to limit cooperation with the federal immigration enforcement actions. Should the city of Atlanta enact policies like that? Or should maybe someone like a city council president use their bully pulpit to make some sort of statements or state some ideas or visions around immigration policies? What are your thoughts there?
Well, I think that the city council is the one who sets policy, and they would be the ones to make the decision, of course, in collaboration with our mayor. However, I will say that I think the role that the council presidents can play is one that I've already played. And that is to engage and be involved with organizations like the National League of Cities, where cities across the country come together and vet these, these very issues. And our policy position, which I also had brought back to our city council and we adopted, was that we want a comprehensive immigration reform. I think that we can deal with these issues about sanctuary cities or not, those are one issue. But we also need to look and press our federal government to come up with comprehensive reforms so that every city is very clear about how we are going to work with our federal partners in enforcing immigration. And that is what I think that we need to do. We have made a statement as the city, as a welcoming city. We have not so far as written policy that says specifically sanctuary city and what that was.
Is that something we, the city maybe should do?
I think that is something the city council, as well as the mayor, need to discuss. Because of course, there are implications on both sides. And I think that it's something we strongly should consider.
Stephanie Stokes, your question.
Councilmember Wan, your district has seen a lot of development. You can see it just up the road, along Cheshire Bridge Road. But not all Atlanta neighborhoods have shared in that growth. How would you, as city council president, bring investment to other neighborhoods in Atlanta?
That's one of the big reasons why I'm running for office this time. It really is just the stark disparities that have now emerged or have continued to worsen across our city. It's almost like you drive through my district and then drive into other parts of the city. You're in a completely different city or country. What my plan is, is to leverage the relationships that I have developed with those that have been active in my district. I'm already having conversations with builders and property owners to understand why it is, what motivates them and what is preventing them from going into some of these other communities that are begging for development, when some of this, parts of the city are overdeveloped and are saying no more. It all boils down to relationships and understanding the conversation, the currency that developers and all other stakeholders trade in with regard to development, and having these tough conversations. But that's exactly the reason why I'm running, and those are the skillsets and relationships I want to bring to solve the problem.
A lot of folks who are watching may know kind of what the city council president does. There's a textbook answer. Could each of you tell me what the non-textbook answer is, in your view? And Ms. Moore will start with that.
Well, the non-textbook answer is that the city council president is a representative of the city. They are one that can be, as I said, at the table when national discussions of other cities and policies. They're the ones that can be at the table when you are looking at things on a statewide basis. But more importantly, they are certainly have a bully pulpit to help move forward, things that are important to our citizens, like public safety, issues about our infrastructure, our roads, our sidewalks, and affordable housing in the city of Atlanta. They're the ones who are going to make sure that you have the correct council members engaged and involved and in committee chairs that can help drive that discussion. And where the council may be lacking in driving that discussion, the council president is uniquely suited to be the one to be there. I'm also very apt in writing and developing policy, and certainly will be doing that to help guide some of these issues.
Alex Wan, your non-textbook answer?
So the informal responsibilities of the city council president are actually what excites me the most about the position. That vantage point of being able to see across the city, see what your colleagues on council are working on, what their priorities are, seeing the commonalities, and then kind of mobilizing people around any particular issue, bringing in the private sector, the public sector, the nonprofit sector, the higher ed sector, even the communities, to brainstorm, think tank, kind of create solutions for some of the big challenging problems we have. I mean, the things we have to look forward to that we need to solve going forward are around transportation, around affordability, around economic disparity. These are tough problems that the city can't solve on our own. We need help. We need our partners at the table. We need to restore a relationship with the Atlanta Public School System. We need to strengthen our relationship with the state government. And that's the opportunity that I get most excited about, because I think my skillset, my experience, my personality, my temperament, and just what I've demonstrated as a district councilperson, will bring to the table and help us move the city forward.
Giovanna, the next question, please.
Mr. Wan, you spoke about priorities, discussing the budget. In order of priority, do you think a greater portion of the budget should go toward transportation, public safety, or infrastructure? Which is number one, two, and three, and why?
Okay. My first priority is public safety. I think that's fundamentally what the city municipalities' responsibility is, is to keep our residents safe. The second one is infrastructure. I think that, you know, we need to make sure that the condition of the roads and the facilities that the city creates, constructs, we should be maintaining and to the highest level possible. And the last one is transportation. I think that that is the one issue that if left unaddressed, will end up choking our ability to grow and expand. And it's a problem that is going to, like I said, require a lot of resources and a lot of our other municipal partners. And I look forward to working on all three of them.
So why is that one third?
Because again, I think fundamentally, I think that public safety is the very, very basic service, city service, that Atlanta should be providing. The second is infrastructure and transportation. While it is part of, you can use the infrastructure investments to address that, I think that's a bigger problem that we're going to need a lot of help from our partners on.
Maggie Lee, your question.
Sure, here's a question for, for Ms. Moore. Let's talk about police. The cities had a hard time recruiting and retaining as many officers as, as the city would like to have. How do you tackle that? How do you pay for it?
Well, we tackle it, first of all, by recognizing it's a priority. I am certainly distressed by many of the conversations we go back and forth with our police officers when they tell us that we are losing officers and that we do not have enough officers on the street. I'm not talking about the total number of officers. I'm talking about the net number of officers that respond to your 911 call. And one way we're going to be able to do it is we've got to laser focus on their compensation and how they're being paid so that they're not, so that they are competitive and they're not being drawn away by other jurisdictions after we've paid thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars to train them. So we've got to retain the ones that we have. We're certainly losing a lot of our veteran officers. And we've got to have a good compensation package that's going to recruit them. And the retaining part, after we recruit them, making sure that they're sure that they're going to be adequately paid and competitively paid across their other colleagues in other jurisdictions.
Stephanie Stokes, you get the final question in this round.
Okay. Councilmember Wan, last year, Atlanta voters approved $2.5 million to expand MARTA. But that money will only go so far. So I want you to answer which projects you would build first.
So I think the first thing that we, I would love to see the MARTA half pension, it's actually $2.3 billion that, that we will have to invest. I think the first thing we have to do is expand current service. Too many, I've talked to too many voters across the city who complain about not being able to access MARTA. They, you can't get from where you are, it's basically the last mile connectivity. You can't get from where you are to a station and then to your final destination. So whether it's rapid bus, transit bus, if it's smaller vehicles that get through neighborhoods a little easier, I think that's the first thing we need to focus. Light rail is the second. I really think that we are underinvested in light rail. I think the Clifton Corridor that would connect the city with CDC, Children's Hospital in Emory is a fantastic opportunity. I think there are other lines that we need to explore as well. But I would prioritize the, the two initiatives in that order.
Well, that's all the time we have for questions. Each candidate now has 60 seconds for a closing statement. And a reminder that C.T. Martin was unable to join us for this debate, and he is represented by an empty chair. By random selection, Alex Wan, you get the first closing statement.
So thank you very much again to the Atlanta Press Club for hosting us. I'm an Atlantan. I grew up in Stone Mountain. I went to DeKalb County Public Schools. I ran for office in 2009 and again in '13 to bring the education that I have. I'm a Georgia Tech engineering grad. I have an MBA from Wharton. I've taken continuing ed courses at Harvard University. And my work experience in the public, private, nonprofit, and higher education sectors to solve Atlanta's problems and to move Atlanta forward. You know, I keep going back to, the city council president is going to be the team leader of seven new council members next year. And I know, I know, with the experience and the temperament that I bring, that we can build a council that operates efficiently, deliberates thoroughly, and we can be independent, ethical, yet collaborative, and that we can build in Atlanta that invites people in to solve our problems. And that's the leadership I want to bring. AlexWanForAtlanta.com. I hope I can count on your vote on November 7.
And Felicia Moore, you may now have your 60 seconds for a closing statement.
Well, thank you. And thank you to the Atlanta Press Club for giving us this opportunity to speak to voters. I would like to say that generally, our city is doing well. I mean, we have a positive thing that we can certainly build on. And I will continue, as council president, to be the reformer, the one who's working to protect our seniors by passing legislation like Matty's call, the one who has looked at fiscal responsibility of the city, requiring that we mandate, that we save our reserves, which has gotten now to $175 million, making sure that we focus on public safety and infrastructure and affordable housing, those issues that concern you. I have a track record of not only being an oversight and being a fiscal watchdog, but I've also put in legislation to make things better in our procurement system, to make sure that we are watching out for your tax dollars and promoting those things in the city. I would love your support. Please go to votefeliciemore.com. Join our team. Atlanta deserves more.
Well, that concludes today's debate between candidates for Atlanta City Council President. A reminder, election day is Tuesday, November the 7th. Early voting begins October the 20th. Our thanks to the candidates and to our panel of journalists. We'd also like to thank the Atlanta Press Club for arranging today's debate, and our gratitude to Public Broadcasting Atlanta for hosting us. Finally, a big thanks to all of you for being with us for this, the Atlanta Press Club Louder Milk Young Debate Series. I'm Jim Burris of 90.1 WABE. Take care, and remember to vote.